What is going on beautiful people? Welcome back to the eight one seven podcast where we talk about the lovely city of Fort Worth, Texas, beginning of politics, business, culture, news. If it impacts you as a Fort Worthian, we discuss it. Today, my co-host Anne Zeta is out of town seeing her kiddos. So I have the privilege today to be here with two lovely guests, two Keller High School students, Lada and Zephyr. They are part of KSAO, an activist organization on their campus to keep leadership accountable and their students informed about what's going on in their school district. So as pod listeners, we are in for a treat as we get to hear from real students from Keller High School. Here is Lada and Zephyr.
Okay, so I was born in Brazil, in Sao Paulo. It's to the southern part of Brazil, in Paraná. And we, so me and my family, we moved to the, we moved to like Keller, I think at first in like a hotel apartment thing. When I was around six years old, we just, I think my dad got a good job opportunity. So we came over here and, you know, I guess American dream. You know, and just looking for like a better life and stuff. So yeah, so I just, I remember getting here and being at like the apartment, the hotel. And then that was in Keller. And then a few months later, or like a few weeks later, we moved to a house in North Richardson Hills. And I went to Green Valley Elementary School, which is BISD. But eventually in sixth grade, I moved to BCI, which is Keller ISD, obviously. And I've continued my KISD education up until now. And now I'm a freshman in high school, in Keller High School.
Alright, so I was born in Texas, raised Texan. And so I first went to Willis Lane Elementary School. And I've gone up through Indian Springs, up to Keller High School. And I've also had two sisters that have gone through this school district. And they have, we've all been kind of a part of the school district. And I've been able to kind of see what's happening with certain schools like SKE closing down and forming into Indian Springs. As well as more recent stuff that I think we'll probably discuss today.
Yeah, I have an older brother as well. I, well, I have a sibling as well. He's, his name is Bruno. He's a senior at, in high school right now. So class of 2025, he's graduating.
Well, I would love, since you guys have been there, so for so much of your education. How has, you know, Tarrant County, Fort Worth, the metroplex has continued to grow extremely fast, but how's it impacted Keller specifically?
Well, I don't know. I think it's brought a lot of different people into Keller, different, like diverse groups, minorities. So many different people looking for a better life, looking for just opportunities. And that's why so many people came to our district is because they just saw, they saw a great school with great opportunities for their kids. And that's why, I'm pretty sure that's why we came here to Keller, because we thought they had great schools. And I just, my, I remember we specifically switched from BISD to KISD because we thought that the education would be much better. And I don't know if I can say that it's continuing.
Well, I mean, what about you as a, you know, born and raised Texan, I, in my mind, living in the loop of Fort Worth. Keller felt like it was a small town with, with one road at one point, or was that never really the case for you?
Well, I did grow up as a little kid, so I don't think I was entirely aware of all the changes that have been happening. But I do know, like, I was really kind of aware of what my sister was doing because I always looked up to them. And so I, I noticed like my oldest sister, she was a part of the Keller High School band. And like she even went to, I think the Macy's Day Parade. And it's like, there's just a lot of these great things that have been able to like, that these programs been able to develop like that. And now it's, I think my graduating class at Keller High School has almost 700 students. So there's a lot more people, a lot more people to get to talk to and a lot of perspectives that need to be taken into consideration.
What is it like to be a student today in Keller High School? Like if you had to describe from your perspective, what, what, what is it like being a 14, 15 year old today in society, living in Keller?
Oh, that's a good question. I mean, I think it varies for everyone. It's a lot of, you know, in high school, there are like groups of people, different groups of people. So it kind of depends on where you are with that. I mean, I've, I've always been with a group of like weird kids with the, with more minorities. And so I know what it's like to, you know, I know what it's like for like the, like the popular kids to be like bullying you or something. But I mean, I've always had confidence. I've never let that affect me. But I know that like right now, there are so many minorities being impacted by the decisions that the Board of Trustees are going to make. Or trying to make. And I know that just going to Keller High School, it's been a good experience so far, you know. I, I've actually been really excited for the opportunities at KCal. As someone who's always been very artistic and very interested in like a career to do with art, you know, like something to do with cinematography. Like, like filmmaking, like graphic design and all that stuff. There are, there have been so many great opportunities offered to me that I just know so many people would be so grateful to have. And I'm glad that I have the opportunity to be able to pursue my dreams because Keller offers these services. And I would just, I would hate to see it if someone who was just like me, someone who was very similar to me, but who was just a little less. Like had a little less advantage, who was a little less privileged. They just won't get the same opportunities as me, even though they may have similar dreams and they want to do similar things. They just won't have the opportunity because of a choice that they can't even have a voice in.
Zephyr, what I would like to hear from you is can you give us like a breakdown? Like as if we don't know what's going on in Keller. Do you feel comfortable kind of telling us what's happening right now?
So I think it was December, there was a board meeting and the Board of Trustees went into an executive session. Which basically means they're just gonna talk behind, they're just gonna talk by themselves without then board meeting being seen by thousands of people. And during this, which we later found out, they were discussing a district split in which along three seventy-seven. The school district can be split, split east and west. And we found out like weeks later, or I'm not entirely sure the exact date, but it was really, really big thing. Because it breached a lot of trust in the Board of Trustees because they were talking about a plan behind our back that would have a huge impact. And they don't seem to be wanting to take it up to a vote, which by a code, there's a code in which you have to take a. If you're going to separate a school district, you have to have a 25% voter turnout. And we barely even get like 10% voter turnouts for the Board of Trustees. So like, that's not even likely to happen, but they're not even saying that they will take it to a vote, which is really concerning. And then also the split itself has a lot of issues. The first one of all is it doesn't really have any economic benefits, which was the initial idea. And they don't seem to be not trying to push it anymore, even though we've already seen the studies and how there's not going to be any more state funding. They don't really acknowledge the risk for property taxes as a school district split would make her. And also they don't consider the job security of teachers. And these are all like issues that they don't talk about. And the idea that it would help us for funding, we've already seen isn't true. And they still won't take it to a vote. And it's just, it's, they're just trying to push something that won't help and just separates the community.
Yeah, like relating to that, the, when you said that it doesn't, it has no financial gain. You know, we've been kind of looking into this type of stuff and we've seen that like, so according to the MOOC KC report available to the public. On the January thirtieth board meeting, no gain or loss in funding would be in order if we were to split. And like the consult, the consultant groups, RSM and MOOC KC actually suggested like an alternative of selling some property to alleviate debts. At the January thirtieth board meeting, which we both went to, which they spoke in. Actually, they came to the board meeting and they came to the conclusion, conclusion that the split would garner zero extra friends for either ISD. And like the idea that seceding KHS, like seceding KHS district would gain like a bonus grant from the state is actually completely false. Because like, so basically when a district, when a new district is formed, the government is supposed to send them money. But a split doesn't qualify for that. So we would not be receiving like money from the government. That's just not true. So there's really no reason, I can't see any financial gain that they could possibly get from this, right? And there are other solutions. There are other things that they can do that would benefit us like, or that would at least save us some money. Like for, for example, the fact that they pay their political interest lawyer, Tim Davis, like $400 an hour, according to his asking salary. Which you can find online on JacksonWalker.com. They, they paid, they paid that guy $400 an hour. And we already have, like, we already have a lawyer on staff that we can just, that we have at all times if we need him, you know?
Yeah. What, uh, what, so I want to ask two questions. My first question. Like you said, there's 700 kids in your school. There's over 30,000 kids in the district. Like what got you guys to the point of being so knowledgeable about this and being the, the students to really care? Or do you feel like this is, is this something where 10 to 20% of the student body is, is getting more informed? Or like, how did, how did you guys get so informed about this?
So first I want to correct you. I said there were seven, about 700 students in my graduating class. So that's probably like 3,000 students in my school, estimating that. And I would say a lot of the student body is probably not super aware of this, but like they know about it. And it's like a big thing that I think some, everybody kind of knows what's going on. But it honestly, it shouldn't be the students, students shouldn't have to speak out about this, but they, we do have to, but it shouldn't have come to this. To the point where students are having to advocate for the rights because the board members aren't. And the reason we are, the reason we're students that are becoming more involved in this is because we noticed this breach of trust from the Board of Trustees. And we know we don't have that opportunity to vote that other residents do. So this is our form of trying to speak out to where it's where we can speak out and.
Yeah, like we need people to advocate for like the very people who will be like directly affected by these like decisions. It's crucial that we have speakers that will voice our concerns, that will voice the concerns of so many people at our school. Because there, there are so many people who are just, who are scared to speak out, who like they're, they have this fear of speaking out because. Either because people will make fun of them at school or because there might be consequences or all that type of stuff. So we need people who will speak for those people. And also just getting informed about this. I think it just, it started with, I heard about the split one day. I didn't really know much of it. I didn't really think much of it. But you know, I was like, well, this is affecting me. So I should, I should probably look into it. And Heath also helped a lot with that. He was very, he was very like passionate about this. And we, we all sit together at lunch. So one day he was like, guys, like, let me tell you guys about the district split and why it's bad. And we all learned about it. We all think it's unfair. We all think it's not necessary. And just learning about something that shouldn't be happening will get you like, will get you to like want to know more, to want to get more involved. There's definitely like an importance and just being aware of what's going on around you. Because so many kids at our school are just like walking around completely clueless of the things that are happening. Of the things that are quite literally affecting them directly.
And I want to add on to like the people being afraid to speak out. And I think this can kind of apply to teachers more. And I want to say, I want to think that a lot of the teachers at our schools are very, very qualified. I love a lot of my teachers and they're very supportive. They helped me learn. And I think I've gotten pretty far in my education because of them. I really appreciate that. But when they're in fear of their job security and when they're already, already underpaid and working a lot. It's, it's just another thing to add that they're concerned about their job security. And aren't able to be like, hey, this is best for the kids because teachers know what's best for the students, because that's their job. And when they're afraid to speak out about what's best for the students. That's, that's just a scary thing when teachers can't tell what's best, can't speak out about what's best for students.
Yeah. And people will say that it won't make a difference. People like at school, when we were doing the walkout, people were like laughing at us, being like, oh, this isn't going to make a difference. And like, just like poking fun at the fact that we're trying to do something about this. And like, they say that there's no use trying, but if you keep that mindset, if that mindset is kept by like so many people, then no change is going to happen. You can say that we're just students and that we're like, yeah, you could just say that we're, you can just say that we're just students and we can't make a difference. But ordinary people can do extraordinary things. Like if you look at historical figures like, like Rosa Parks, you could say she was just a passenger on a bus. But by peacefully protesting, by just staying in her seat, doing something so simple, she created this change. She inspired like a revolution. And I think we can do that as well. I think the, the walkout, we got, even if we didn't get as many people as we wanted, we still got media coverage, which helped a lot. So we're being noticed. So to the people, people who are laughing, like who will be like, oh, I don't know why you're doing this. Like who's on the news, you know?
What, so let me, the next context I would like to get here too is. What, what is, do you guys believe is the motive? What, if we're, if we're coming to the conclusion as students that there's no financial benefit, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't change that. What's, what is the motive, I guess, talked among students and families about what's going on?
So it's kind of unclear because again, the school board isn't being fully open about their decision-making. But if we look along like where they're splitting it, we can see that the west side, which will have three feeder patterns. Is, I think 30% economically disadvantaged. And, and the east side is 8% economically disadvantaged and also like 80% white. So there's, there could be implications that this is racially motivated and kind of a segregation. But yeah, I think that's one, that's one idea of what they might be doing.
Yeah, I think they're trying to, like, I don't know, they say that they're trying to like do this for, for like to get rid of debt or to do this, to do that. But yeah, like, just like Zephyr said, like it honestly, it seems like just bigotry and prejudice. Because we are quite literally being split like at the, the more privileged side is like, is just gonna get. Okay, sorry, like, we can pull up the statistics right now. Like the privileged side, which is like Keller, Keller High School, is going to split off. And it's like, it's very white, it's very rich. And the other side is, is not. And so to do this split, it's just, what could be the motive? What could be the motive? If it's not that, you know, like, why would you do this if there's no reason to?
Could you guys give me context on the, from the outside looking in? There was the, the conversation about a film crew. I guess this could have been before you got to school. But there was a film crew last year that was like Trump supported or like religious supported. Like, and there was a, and that was a piece of, of, there's like this religious piece? Are you guys aware about that at all?
Yeah, I heard about it in the podcast, but I, I was never there.
Okay, okay.
I'm pretty sure what happened is, I'm not sure which board member, but they brought a film crew onto one of the high schools. And what happened is a student, well, you're not allowed to do that without like doing certain things. And they did. So a student filmed what they were doing. And that kind of got them into like a lot of attention and it was like, you shouldn't have been doing that. And then so later, there was a phone ban in place, which is like, you can kind of connect the dots. It's because they were caught with a phone. And yeah, and it's like, I don't think the phone ban was entirely, like, it's a pretty thing that's going along the country is removing phones from schools to keep.
How's that going by the way? How, how does that go for you guys?
I think.
What's the student's perspective on that?
I think at first I was really frustrated because when I'm in school, I like to listen to a lot of music. And so I had to like get ways to listen to music because I really, I really like listening to music. But overall, I think it actually has helped my personal focus in school to a certain extent. It's just, it's kind of weird that they didn't do that until they were caught with a phone and, you know.
I don't know. I just, um, I'm kind of, it's like a, it's like a weird situation. Cause I think we should be able to use our phones like at lunch, for example. If we want to like talk to parents, if we want to, like if a student needs something, like they can't just like text their parents. Cause you know, like sometimes a lot of students have like mental health issues and then they like text their friends. Or they like text their parents to pick them up and they just, they can't do that anymore. But it just, it seems like something like trying to exercise some type of control over students. Which I know it's, it's beneficial, it's beneficial, it can be beneficial, it can get people to focus. But by doing this, it also kind of encourages people to just be using it like in secret and just getting people in trouble. And I, yeah, I don't know. It's just.
I think it's kind of a thing with like all absolute bans is it's a really bit too extreme because there's always circumstances, always circumstances in which. Students will need to be able to use their phones because maybe there was a time when we didn't have phones and it's like, back in my day, we didn't have phones, we weren't able to. But now we are able to do it and it's a helpful thing that a student is able to contact a parent if they're having like a panic attack. Or able to like say, I need to be picked up. I'm feel really sick rather, or whatever the need is, there's always going to be a circumstance in which a phone will be helpful. Or whatever, like even the book ban is the same thing. There's always a circumstance in which something can be useful for certain things, of course, other things not. But just banning it flat out is going to cause a lot of.
Issues. Yeah.
What, what, what perspective, I guess you brought up the book ban as well. Is, is that something that you guys had to live through or was that also pre your guys' time?
I'm gonna be honest, I wasn't very aware of the book ban until while we were at the walkout. I was going around with a fellow member of the KSAO, Chloe, and we were doing interviews. And we interviewed someone who started talking about the book ban and I hadn't heard of it. And I asked, I asked her to explain more. She told me a little bit about it. And I also listened to the podcast where you guys talked about that book ban. And I just, I didn't even know that that was happening. And honestly, I think that's a problem. And I don't know if I was there at the time. I don't know, I don't know much of it. But I don't think you should ban books and stop people from like reading things. Because I guess like they say, like reading is knowledge and stuff. And you can get like, just because something is bad, doesn't mean you should be, you shouldn't be exposed to it at all.
Also like literature will reflect reality. And even if a book has something crude or something that you could deem inappropriate. If you acknowledge it as like in full context of whatever that piece of literature is, it's going to have value. And I think when you limit your views like one or two pages, you lose the value of the book as a whole. And who's just going to skip to like page 237 to read that one crude scene in the book? When the whole book is actually about like a whole critique of whatever system or whatever story. And you lose a lot of value when you just think, oh, it has a bad word. It must be a bad book.
I guess if, if we're looking at, you know, Keller ISD as a book and, you know, is this a good book or a bad book? What's, what's the outcome? It seems like they're, they're saying that they have possible control in the sense of, I believe Matt Kraus, their, the county commissioner also said. They're like reading a law in a specific way that, is the energy that defeat is there? And or is there, is, do you feel like they're actually listening? Cause I know you spoke at the, at the event, you're taking photos at the event. Do you feel like they're listening or do you feel like? They've made their decisions?
Yeah, honestly, like our friend who spoke, Jaden, he said that while he was looking at like. He said that while he was giving his speech, all of the board members were like smiling. And it was clear to him that they weren't listening. And it just seemed like they really were just trying to get it over with because over and over, they would, they wouldn't like, even if people, people would go over the time a little bit. They would just, they would be like, alright, next, alright, next. Like listen to what they have to say. Let them finish at least. And it got to a point where they just muted the mic when, when the person went over their time. Which another thing to mention is that at the meeting before that, at the board meeting before that, people had two minutes to speak. And it remained two minutes until we got to the board meeting. And our friend texted us and it was like, oh, they just changed it. They just changed it to a minute. You guys have to change your speeches. We have to make it more concise. And so I, I feel like that was kind of a little bit weird. If you know what I'm getting at.
There was a lot of things at that January thirtieth board meeting that were kind of a surprise. The first of which was the like figuring out the day of that our speaking time was cut in half. That was like really concerning because I was like, I was already like, my speech that I had prepared was already like two minutes and 30 seconds. And I had to like cut down to two minutes. And I'm like, oh, I have to cut it down to one minute. So it was all thing. And I didn't, I didn't even finish my speech whenever I did there. But then another thing was, which I, I appreciate that they did this. They did the financial report before the speaking time. But we didn't have an idea that they would be doing this. So you had a lot of people, I'm staying up until like one o'clock. Because the board meeting or like, I, I think I spoke at like nine o'clock. And it was just like, I was kind of expecting to be able to like get home at a reasonable time. But it was like the speaking time was pushed off by like another two hours, which is like, it's kind of a good, bad thing. Whereas like, of course, like you, I'm glad we got the financial information. But we also did learn that financial information is that there is no benefit. But it was also kind of like, these are students, these are parents, these are teachers that have to get home. And it's not, they didn't, they didn't sign up to be on a board that is supposed to do.
Yeah, one, one thing that our friend Heath mentioned was that they did this board meeting at a very busy day for many people. Where there were a lot of like school events happening and a lot of people wouldn't be able to come. So we just thought that was a very interesting coincidence. But also I remember when they were going through like the financial stuff. It was just like, they were trying to pull up these statistics to like prove that this was for the benefit of all of us by saying like. Smaller, smaller districts do better and stuff like that. But like really, it's just like not true. I don't think, because speaker there who, she, she was going to speak. But she, her son had texted her who was watching from home and had like made some, made some calculations and seen that, that just, that wasn't true. And just all the statistics, it just, it proves nothing. It's just trying to prove a point that honestly, even if was true. Shouldn't really be a great factor in this because limiting someone's education or just the fact that they weren't transparent. There's just so many things that were like, that's wrong with the, with the district split. And this isn't going to change that.
Yep. And it looks like there's, you guys may not know, but looking at the newspaper for the listeners, some type of lawsuit going towards the district about. Looking at the Voting Act of what you guys were talking about earlier.
Current goal is to.
Yeah, if you want to talk about the organization.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that. So for, so KSAO, Keller Student Advocacy Organization. What we're doing right now is, so our main goal is to flip the school board and get people to vote on the like candidates that we support. Like, like Randy Campbell, Jennifer Erickson and Jennifer Ramsey. And right now we're, what we're doing is we're going to events to support the candidates. And right now, we're, what we're doing is uh, we're going to events to support the candidates and uh, we're just basically doing anything else. Uh, to oppose the district split. And you know, we wanna start local, start um, doing things for the community that we're currently in. So like, for example, we've uh, so um, we've gone to um. Not everyone, not, obviously not everyone in uh, our organization, which is really like small right now, just like a couple people. Um, can go to all of the events, but we're doing our best right now. We've gone to um, obviously the board meeting, we had people watching at home as well. Uh, we went to events like meet the board runners, February second, um, and meeting candidates, the walkout, obviously. Um, there's a meet and greet coming up, February twentieth, that we're also planning to attend. Um, and you know, we helped organize the walkout, so just doing a bunch of things for our community right now.
How, how important have you guys seen now the importance of school boards uh, to your education? Um, I would love to kind of, to get your guys' take on, it seems like you're supporting some candidates. So it seems like you guys are realizing you're looking for something.
So I think I talked about this a little bit earlier is how the school board is very centralized and they have one effort. And they're like coordinated to get their things done and then not like make it very last minute and the community doesn't really know about it. And I, that's why I think it's really important and like I've said earlier, that we really only see like ten percent voter turnout at like the most. For these squareboard elections. And it's like when ten percent, imagine if there's ten percent of the people voted for like the president. You would, there would be immediately like you would rea- you would rerun the election um, to get more turnout. And it's like when ten percent of the people only participate, it's a little frustrating because I'm like, I'm a student, I don't have, I can't vote for them and only ten percent of people are voting. It's like, this affects me and I can't make a decision on it, so that's why we're speaking out and.
We want a voice, you know, um, and the candidates can be like our voice, so if. Um, I actually, I, we've been like looking into uh, some candidates, um. Heath has been a big part in this, going to all the events and stuff. So we're in support of like Randy Campbell, uh, which on his site, he says that he wants to. Uh, cultivate a positive and supportive environment where every teacher feels respected and every student can excel. He wants to keep the politics and everything out of our education, which is what should be prioritized in our district. Um, we also have Jennifer Erickson, who um, she is gonna focus on supporting teachers, students. Um, and everyday working families, uh, she believes everyone should be treated with respect. Uh, and we have Jennifer Ramsey, who will, she says she will focus on treating all students with dignity and compassion. Uh, particularly those from marginalized backgrounds, which I think is something that we all need right now. Um, so all these people that we support, we think they're doing good things and we hope that, you know, we can achieve our goal of. Uh, getting these candidates to be our voice in the board.
I'd like to share some dates, if you are a Keller ISD resident and you are able to register for vote, to vote for the school board election. You need to do that by April third, it's not super soon, but it's coming up fast and then election will be April third, I think these are the dates. Um, but definitely try and get registered to vote and do vote because this impacts students, the future generation. And people that will be really, will be part of society.
Yeah, we, we want our education to be the best education that we can get and like, as, as someone like from Brazil. Um, the public school system here is like so much better, it's so, I know like um, my family, uh, my cousins. And stuff like that, they all, uh, they all think this is an amazing, like that being in the school district is a good opportunity for me. Because they, they didn't have those opportunities and like I have a very talented cousin who wants to pursue a career in art and like. Um, and just do so many amazing things, he's such a great person and he's so intelligent. But he may not be able to like pursue that, um, because like, um, because. Like he didn't get like the education that, for example, I get. And so I think we should keep this like, we should keep. Um, our education like, well, we should keep this like um, standard that people see that. Like America has great education and I think we should keep that, you know, and um, yeah.
How's the support of your guys' organization being from a adult level at the school? Have you guys gotten pulled into any administrator meetings or educator meetings? Like, how's, how's the support of what you guys doing at the school level been?
So, um, I think there's a lot more, we're from Keller High School and I think there's also a lot going at Timber Creek. But at Keller High School, we've been, uh, I'll, I'll talk about like the walkout, which is the main event that we've helped organize. And so how that happened is there was, um, uh, I think an anonymous person proposed the idea of. Walking out on like a Friday at um, in the middle of second period. And we were like, yeah, this is a great way, walkouts are a nice peaceful protest for, that would get our voice heard. So we were like, let's do this, we have a date set and we just kind of push it. And as we're doing that, we are. Um, we have to look into all the student code of conduct stuff and how like we're able to organize this. And there's a lot of small rules where like you can't be this ra- radius of the school and then, or else it like counts as being disruptive and then you get. Uh, certain punishment, you can't, if you skip the whole day, you don't have a parent note, you can get Saturday school. And we had to do all these things. And so I think the administration staff was overall kind of cooperative with that. Um, there were times it was a little bit frustrating where we weren't able to like put up posters or flyers about it. And it made it a little bit harder to get the word out, but I think we did our best to work with administration staff. Um, but a lot of times we, we're trying to keep it with students because um, it's a student organization, so.
Yeah, cause um, we made, uh, we saw like, there's an Instagram post about it, we just, social media is mainly the way to get the word out and everything. So um, and the, obviously the, the administration, when they found out about it, I don't think they tried to like encourage it. But um, I, I do remember that some of my friends, um, they were like trying to put up posters, but they got in trouble and they were pulled into the AP office. And um, they, they were talking about how, oh, you can't, you can't put these posters up, like you need permission and all that type of stuff. But um, they told me that as they were like walking out, that the APs were like, hey, we support you though, we um. We think it's great that you're doing this, um, but just, you know, you, you can't do this. And one very frustrating thing was trying to get the information that I needed to know. If, if I would get an absence or if I would go, go to Saturday school, it was kind of hard to find that information, it was kind of. They kept changing it and um, when I, so I went over to like the AP office and the attendance office and I asked them. Um, I asked them like, hey, like, how's this gonna work? And they said that like, if I got my parent. Um, if I got my mom to send like a, a note to the uh, to my attendance clerk, saying that I'd be participating in the walkout. It would just count as an absence. And I was so surprised, cause everyone was saying, you're gonna get Saturday school, you're not gonna be exempt from the exams. You're gonna get consequences and that discouraged so many people from doing it, just because they were scared of the consequences. Um, but in, when in reality, if you can get your parents sign a note or if you can like come back before second period or sorry, before. Yeah, like before second period ended, then you wouldn't get major consequences and nobody knew that. Like, I feel, I felt like nobody knew that and I think that was an issue, is just um, just the lack of information that we had. But besides that, um, I will say that I think the administrators were very cooperative and you know, led us to a thing. Um, so yeah, I just, the student support also has been different, but.
I do wanna talk to you guys about, you guys said you would be on the side of this, if, if this went through, you'd be on the side that would be the smaller district, correct?
Yes.
Like you would be in the smaller Keller district.
Yeah.
And. The demographics of that group would go from, I don't know what percentage, you know, Caucasian today to eighty percent. I think I heard of eighty percent if that small, if that small group go. I guess the, the thing that I wanna ask you guys is like, what? Like, how much does diversity, you know, play to your educational experience? Because what I've always find fascinating about the split is that it sounds like the privilege is going to the smaller school. But in my eyes, you're losing the diversity, so could you even argue that you're actually going to the worst side? Because the lack of diversity in your education and different worldviews has now gotten taken from you. And so I'm always interested of how one calls one side of district the better side and the other district, maybe not. So what is your guys' take on that and have kids or families talk about that?
I hadn't thought about that, that's actually, that's a great thing to bring up, I mean, me, like, me personally. Um, I'm like, all of my friends are minorities pretty much, I don't, I'm um, like. Uh, I'm, I'm from Brazil, I'm, so I'm an immigrant, um, a lot of, we have a lot of people who are a part of the. LGBTQIA plus community, um, we have uh, people of all different races in our group. Uh, we have like, w- we have like people who are um, children of immigrants, like first generation. Um, we have like, people who are like not, um. Who, people who aren't cis, uh, and stuff like that, so just a lot of minorities. And I'm so glad I have these people like in my life, people who um, understand me, people who are similar to me, people who uh. Will understand my perspective and um, it just, right now, it's not even just in the district, there's a lot of things going on regarding like. Uh, minorities and their rights and um, so just having a group of people, having a community at my school that I can relate to. And that I um, am very much in agreement with that, it's, it's great to have that diversity. I think that a lack of diversity creates, I don't know, problems.
Yeah, um, I think there is a lot of value with um, all the schools and it's like, even like with organizing U I L events, we always have to work together. And it's really nice to see that like, we work with Central High School or with Fossil Ridge and it always works well, cause we can organize with that. And this school, this, the district split would kind of barrier some of that coordination. And when people say like the right side of the tracks, it's not necessarily that the Keller High School or the new, what, the smaller district will be better. It's because like, that's what the school board intends to, like, that's there, it's the majority of the school board is on that side, so they want this side to benefit. But I don't necessarily think that means that it will benefit, because like we've seen, there's no financial benefit for either side. And it's just kind of, it's just kind of a separation and it just kind of, it, it keeps. It just kind of, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what their motivation is, it's kind of.
I think all the, I think everyone deserves a fair education, everyone deserves a good education. And with, like you said, with like diversity, it brings people together, as, as much as it brings people apart, it brings them together as well. And it's important for, for people to have, um, for people to have like minorities in their school. Because um, like, everyone's human, everyone's equal, you know, and I. And I think being exposed to that and being exposed to different cultures is something that everyone should be able to experience and understand.
Well, yeah, I, you know, I, we, we've done this podcast for a while and, and I think one of the big challenges we try to talk about is like. What is value in society? So it's like, um, you know, you talked about this, this, this smaller district has the more affluent economic. Uh, families, which then attends it that it's, you know, more uh, whites. But the idea of how we migrate and move as communities in the metroplex, like, you know, we need to aspire for schools. Uh, that are diverse and that we rank these schools by, you know, a diversity index, right? My house is worth more because my diversity index is high and everyone in my neighborhood is actually brings value. Rather than everyone in my neighborhood is white, right? Like, I think this massive change on what is value is like such a interesting piece that Keller. Is dealing with, um, and what is the value that, what side we end up on the track of what school district or not. Um, I think is a fascinating piece, uh, and I see you guys craving diversity in your lives. I think is um, an important part why we wanted also get a student's perspectives.
Yeah, I think um, with what you said about value, I think you don't need to have, um, like. I think, yeah, diversity brings value, uh, it brings um, all these things into the community. But even so, you don't need value to simply, you know, exist, to simply be here, to simply like, so many people, so like. So many diverse people, they bring different perspectives, they bring different cultures, they bring so many amazing things with them. Uh, you know, um, so, so many of them are like intelligent and um, passionate. And um, diversity is just this thing that, it's just so awesome, it's so great because everyone's different. But like despite that, we're all human and it's just so amazing to see so many different people just being together. And I think, you know, we should all be friends, we should all, um, you know, I think that brings value into cu- into a community. Is just having people of different places and still being like a community.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's a lot of value in like empathy at the least. Because I think we have a lot of things going on where like, we like to target and uh, and, or like some disassociated group. And if you grow up in a community where everybody's the same, you're not able to develop that empathy. Or like just like basic understanding that we're just all human, we, we're all human. And we have the basic same needs, we need food, we need water and we need social interaction, we need to develop a community. And if you're from a young age, being put in a place where you're not able to understand that not everybody is white. And not everybody is whatever religion or whatever beliefs you have and you're not able to develop the empathy from a young age. You can grow up into a really prejudiced and hateful person that ultimately brings harm to commu- society. And I think if we put value on that, growing that empathy and understanding that we are all human.
Hmm, very well said.
There you have it, that was Lada and Zephyr with Keller High School, some phenomenal students who hopefully gave you hope for the future. Let's continue to take action. Make sure you subscribe, follow and share the podcast with friends and other community members. As we continue to make Fort Worth and Tarrant County a better place for all.